I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Mrs. Vassali?
Here.
Mrs. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Sirianni?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Here.
Mr. Colom?
Here.
I hereby certify this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and as is required by law.
Okay, we have three items on the agenda this evening. The first is a discussion about the Monmouth County Open Space Grant with Mr. Hayes and Mr. Goodman. We then have zoning ordinances, possible changes or recommendations from the planning board from Mr. Turner. And finally, the review of the regular meeting agenda. So if you'd like to start with Mr. Goodman, can you come on up, which you are, and tell us about this new program?
We have successfully applied for Monmouth County Open Space Grants in the past. And we looked at a couple of candidate sites this year. And we felt that the one that probably had the best, probably the best opportunity to fit in with their program criteria was the triangle that's located at the intersection of Florence Avenue and MacArthur in North Long Branch. What you see in front of you, for those of you who have the plan in front of you, is essentially a shade tree park concept with benches along the edge and trees planted along the triangle boundary. And that we also could optionally put in a hardscape that could be put into a courtyard where a potential gazebo could go. We have, we've scoped out some estimates on what it would cost overall, but we need to refine the plan for the actual application itself and come up with a hard engineering estimate on what it would take to look at all the options. We've had a couple of engineers take a look at this, but the most competitive one came from D.W. Smith. They're asking a flat fee in the amount of $10,540 to complete the work that would be necessary for the grant application. If you approve this work tonight, we'll be having a public hearing on September 8th at 4:00 p.m. here in the second floor conference room. And we will be submitting the application with comment on September 20th.
Is there any match on this grant?
It's a full grant.
It's a full grant.
It's a full grant, no match?
If the only thing on condition is, and same as for the trap on this greenway we're successful with, it doesn't cover engineering.
Okay.
Which is why we included the engineering, which you need to do the grant.
Right.
So it's kind of a, but it's, it's...
So do they take the engineer out of the amount?
No, we pay the engineer, so I'm putting it right.
How much is it?
It's $10,500 in the preliminary engineer, yeah. We probably wouldn't need too much engineering if we go forward with the project. It's a pretty, it's a pretty benign project. You know, we could get to the, it'd be nice to get to the walkway in the gazebo among us and trees and benches and it might make, make a nice little pocket park. And it seems to fall into what they're looking for in the county with their programs.
Yeah, no, this really aligns with their criteria very well.
Rob, how did, go ahead.
Is that the maximum grant we could get for that area? I mean, can we get more for the hardscape?
We possibly could. I think it's up to $200,000.
$250,000 is the total grant. One of the things I have discussed with the engineers, if you do notice and if you look at the very north end of the map there, you'll actually see where walk sidewalks are truncated. We would be better off applying for tap, state tap grants to get those walks done. We could conceivably also do under safe routes to schools as well. But we're not including that as in the scope of this work. We just feel there's other grants that could apply for...
They typically wouldn't give you the entire amount that's available.
Okay. Oh, I realize that, but I just wondered if it was capped at like 10.5 and that's why we're kind of stopping at that point.
No, we tried to present a plan that met their criteria, that we think will be, have a successful chance of winning.
Okay.
So that's where we came up with this. And we probably do the option as in the plan for the hardscape and the gazebo.
Right.
Hoping that they'll see that and, you know...
How did you come up with the site, Rob?
We looked at, we, it's a fairly simple process. We look at, we start by getting a list from John's office of what vacant land is owned by the city and what's on the actual Rossi and see what those have been developed or not developed. We looked at sites in North Long Branch and Alvaron, Holy Avenue, for example. And we just looked for concepts and plans that could, you know, would best align with the criteria for Monmouth County Open Space. And after talking with, you know, five to six of us, you know, kind of bouncing ideas around in a room, we decided that this one was probably the one that probably had the best chance of success.
What's the timeline for the application, being the grant awarded and...
So the grant submission is done in the end of September, September 20th. We'll know by shortly after Thanksgiving. Their grant process is pretty quick. And then we, you know, we can do some preliminary planning and engineering. We can decide which pieces of this, if, you know, depending on how much is awarded, can we do in-house and...
That'll drive the project, is how much they give us.
Right. Yeah, we'll, we'll work with the parameters of whatever grant they can provide for us and then we'll come up with a plan to implement it and move quickly on it.
So you need a consensus tonight to move forward with the engineering thing?
Do, and we...
And the application.
And the application itself. There's a resolution that'll be...
We have to do a public hearing.
Right, let's do a public hearing first and then a resolution.
So we have consensus for the, for the engineering.
I'm good. I have a question. Rob, will any of the shrubs that you'll be planting be floral and have a nice scent?
Well...
I think you might know why I'm thinking of that.
Because directly due south of the sewer道...
Is this proximity to 150 July?
Um, we have our choice of trees. Dogwoods smell wonderful in the spring, but not necessarily at the end of the summer. We can, I think we can discuss fragrant shrubbery.
Is it still as much of a problem as it has been in the past? I mean, will people actually sit there and...
Yeah, better, yeah. Look down the street. It's not that bad.
But sometimes I'll just drive by, you know?
Sometimes you get away...
I mean, like he said...
But don't forget the flowering part is more difficult because it's not irrigated. So we have no plans to put an irrigation system in, so that's why, you know, these shade trees are pretty much without, do not show outside border.
The concept was to create something that was visually appealing. Mature growth in any neighborhood tends to kind of act to the value of that neighborhood. We would do our best to put in mature tree growth rather than just saplings. The point is to create more of a shade tree space that people, there'll be benches here and if we can afford it, gazebo. The idea is to make the inviting for the neighborhood folks to be able to come here and find it as a respite of peace.
Any other questions? If not, can we get a consensus? Kate?
I'm good.
Michael?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
I'm okay.
I'm good. Thank you, Rob. Good luck.
Thank you, Tina.
Okay, next we have some zoning ordinances, recommendations with Mr. Turner from the planning board.
Kevin, I think if you want to put the zoning app up...
Yes.
As a point of reference.
You're watching me, aren't you?
I am.
We showed you how to do that. Honestly, I figured it out on my own. No, you didn't. Five-year-old can't show you how to do that. Walk back here to the...
Okay. About two months ago, the, I came before you to request you to allow the planning board to begin the process to look at zoning ordinances and the master plan for a reexamination that does not have to be done until 2018, the end of 2018. And the planning board committee has met and we are coming before you with five recommendations that, as was said to the council before, in the most part of this, it's a housekeeping type of a situation. We are not changing zones. We are not changing the map at all. We are not changing the uses in some of these areas. These are existing uses that in some cases have been on the books back to 1969. And what this is, is some clarification and some definitions that we have come across that in some parts of the ordinance, it says one thing and another part of the ordinance, it says another thing. So some of this is for clarification. So to get into the note that was sent to you, that was also what the planning board worked on, the first item on it is the C4 zone and the change of the wording from motel to hotel. And the reason for this is the connotation, actually the zoning requirements are interchangeable, whether it's a hotel or a motel, it's the same. And as I said, I did go back into the archives and I only got back as far as 1970, which is the 1969 zoning. And the wording for the information as to what the permitted use in the C4 zone and as to what is the requirements for the hotel motel are exactly the same as they were in 1969. Nothing has changed. We're not changing anything at all. And that tracks all the way through from 1969 through the 1976 zoning and also the 1985 zoning and the 2014 zoning.
You're starting in 1969. Has it changed then to a...
Prior to 1969, the uses were the same, but the zoning designations were different. It was not a C4 zone.
Okay.
And that map where the C4 zone is, is exactly the way it was in 1969.
Okay.
Prior to that, it was called a different zone. They went by letters and combination of numbers and it's very confusing to compare that to this. But the use was the same back then, prior to 1969 as it is now. So all this is basically to clarify definition because in parts of the ordinance, it calls it hotel and parts of it calls it motel. And the feeling from the committee was, we could have taken a choice. We could have left it, set it, called it motel or call it hotel. The desire was that the connotation seemed to be more upgraded if you called it a hotel. So that, that's what that is all about.
Will you allow motels?
They're the same. Either one. Today, if we did make this clarification, they could build either one right now.
Different concepts though.
Same standards. Same standards.
Yes, yes. In regards to that.
I think what you were asking is if it's still possible to build a motel.
Yes. Yes.
The new change.
Yeah. So it's really just a word that you can change to, to be consistent. Any, want me to go on or any comments?
The next one then.
Number two, this is also, the hotel slash motel use is a permitted use, but it's vague because in the waterfront mix ordinance number, it is not specifically listed, but it's inferred as that the permitted uses in a zone also carry over to permitted uses that are allowed in the waterfront mixed residential. And what a waterfront mixed residential is specifically, is a basically residential project that can be creative, the architect can be creative and can either do townhouses, single-family houses, mid-rise, or duplexes, or a combination of them. And as per the ordinance that exists right now, that has also been in effect since 1985, they are required in especially the C4 zone and other oceanfront areas that they have a percentage of the use other than residential or parking. In many cases, with the approvals that have been granted in these areas, what the developer has done is he has opened up his spa and his gym and his patio and his pool and whatever beach access he may have to the public, that he has basically created a club that he has allowed a certain percentage of private membership to join and that has met that requirement. The Seaview Towers project, that is what that was approved with. The, I just forgot the name of it, I'm sorry. The project right south of the Renaissance that we just gave the extension to...
Yeah, Beachside Manor.
Beachside Manor, that was what that was approved for. Harbor Island Villas was approved that way. So these are basically what, what we have done before. And it's just a, again, it's a matter of a housekeeping clerical situation. Some of these things that I'm talking about as an aside, when we, back several years ago, when we changed codifiers of the ordinance, they left out certain words from what we had in the original ordinance. So they have not been something that has been major, that have been a use change, but they've been things that have been allowed and we understand those, I understand and most of the planning board members understand the nuances. But what we're looking for is as, as we're getting older and what may happen in the future is let's make sure the ordinance reads as somebody else can look at it without having to rely on somebody else to interpret it for them.
And both of these zones reference ordinance section 345, there's 52, which the title of that ordinance, that section is additional requirements for hotels slash motels in the C4 zone district.
Correct.
But it's in, like you said, it's in different spots in the ordinance, but not confined.
Bottom line, no change.
No change. Just a definition that clarifies and condenses everything so that, as I said, if I'm not here or somebody who understands this isn't here, they can read and understand it themselves.
We can also explain this in the ordinance, in the preamble to the ordinance...
Yes.
And the warehouse closes of the ordinance. So it'll be a permanent record on file with the clerk.
Yes.
Is that also in the C4 zone? Or is that, because it doesn't say in...
The waterfront mix.
That's waterfront mix. It depends on which zone...
That can be any place in the waterfront.
See, the waterfront mix, where that's allowed, has a list of other permitted uses other than just the residential. And the waterfront mix is supposed to allow you to take those other uses and combine them into a residential project as a percentage. So where hotels are permitted use in a zone, yes, that will be in the waterfront mixed residential, could be in the waterfront mixed residential project. But where in the city where a hotel is not allowed as a, you know, in that zone? An example, there's an area up along the riverfront where the mall is off of Liberty Street. That waterfront mixed residential is allowed there, but a hotel use is not a permitted use. It's a standalone use, so you could build a hotel there.
Okay. Thank you.
Number three is the Broadway Gateway. Two reasons why this is being asked for, well, very specifically on this is, as we're all aware of, other projects that have been occurring in Long Branch and the fact that our beaches are very popular and there's a need for parking. And if we do something with a pier, there will be a need addition, for additional parking. And if we want to have any kind of development on the Chandler Maps property, as we've all talked about, especially along South Broadway and potentially at the corner of Laird Street, there's going to be a large need for parking. And just with what we have been examining now with a potential for a pier project, the amount of parking that would be needed for, if all of this was built out, is approximately 3,150 parking places. And we don't have land to spread out and sprawl to do parking. And we also don't use eminent domain to acquire property. So the idea is before we have any kind of a specific project in mind or before us, that we be proactive and allow for the desire that parking structures only will be allowed to be hired so that we can get more parking into a smaller land area. So that's what this is for.
So adding 20 more feet.
Yes, which basically...
So floors.
Yeah. So, you know, we don't know what any kind of project may be out there or whatever, but we want to be proactive, so we're prepared for that.
And I'll go worse into it later.
Well, you avoid, you avoid many legal issues.
Yes.
You do it now as a progressive step. Spot zoning, this, that, the other.
Exactly.
The haters, you know that. Oh my God, we're doing something proactive.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, Carl?
Just an aside to that, there are standards in the redevelopment zone, design guidelines, and also in the zoning ordinance that also deal with setbacks and everything that deal with parking garages. So it's just not a matter of somebody could go in there and build from the property line just a massive building. There's, if you remember in the redevelopment standards, there is a requirement for a minimum setback, but if you go higher, the setback gets greater unless you take the building and step the building back as you get higher. So, so it's not something you're going to get a wall of a parking garage.
Now, this, this is 60 feet from ground up...
Yes.
From grade level.
Yes. Yes, from finished grade up.
Finished grade. So if they go below, they can still go below.
If they can go below grade, Chandler Maps are being shot because of the water table.
I'm just saying, if you're able to do it and still build 60 feet up.
Yes.
Because there is a stream right in the low point of the nav, right?
Yeah. It's right there. It's right there. It was when it was, well, that was the lumberyard, so I have no idea how it is. I know part of it is a culvert, part of it actually is a wood box culvert. I don't know what the rest of it is.
They took, put piping over it and then...
I don't know. It's way before Martin.
So they did.
They did things like that all over the city.
In my West End Garden Apartments, this one, with parking lot.
Number four, Beachfront South. The Bee, Beachfront South, as this, the redevelopment agency has, has seen, has approved based projects that have basically covered the entire Beachfront South area. Everything between Bath Avenue and, meaning North Bath Avenue and Pavilion Avenue, has been approved for projects. Three, I'm sorry, four of which are under construction right now. You have, from there north, you have a block between Pavilion Avenue and Morris Avenue where you have two well-maintained garden apartment complexes. You have a senior citizens building. You have an existing motel. You have another property that the previous owner was looking to do some kind of a transient, I don't want to call it, wrong word, not transient, guest-type housing at one time. And you have vacant property. The desire here is to allow the motel use as, or a hotel motel use, same standards as we're talking about for what's allowed now in Pier Village as a hotel motel, to allow the owners of that motel to do improvements on the motel. Because currently we have a requirement that we do not grant variances or anything like that for anything in the redevelopment zone. So if anybody wanted to do any improvements to the existing motel right now, they wouldn't be allowed to, other than to paint the building. So we have an existing motel use there that it would seem to me the logical thing since there has been some indication that there may be some improvements in that area, to allow it to go forward so that it does not become a situation where we have to say, no, it can't be done, or set a precedent and grant variances, which we have never done in a redevelopment zone.
You're talking use variances in the redevelopment?
Correct.
It's only use variance. You can grant other variances and waivers in a redevelopment zone.
How many rooms are, you know, what's the room limit on these?
I...
There's, there's a number of requirements.
There's two requirements.
Seven hundred square feet, beachfront motel, occupancy room. Minimum number should be 50 for some motel.
Right, that's, that's the standard. It has to be a minimum 50 units.
Thanks on lock coverage.
Or we have a pre-existing use which we look at different.
Depends on the property. Lock coverage, 35 percent.
Did the, did the planning board committee look at how the Beachfront South amendment would impact or not impact any of the proposed development in the Pier Village Phase 3 or other parts?
Yes.
And did you come to a conclusion?
It actually complements that. It actually enhances what Pier Village 3 wants to do. An example of that, from a zoning standpoint, if, we have an older city and we even heard it a lot, what we have and where the zone lines have fallen and like that. But if you were creating something new, you would try not to put your zone line down the middle of the street so that one side of the street would be commercial, hotel, and another side would just be residential or something like that. What you would try to do is move the zone line off of the street so that both sides of the street would have frontage and have uses that complement each other. So if you allow for, as we're proposing, that if somebody wanted to upgrade a motel next to, or a hotel next to a hotel, it actually complements that instead of having something where somebody might come in and just put a single-family house next to a large hotel.
Any other questions? No? Moving forward.
Okay, and number five is dealing with the Lower Broadway Corridor. One of the reasons this is coming to you now, we would have done it sooner when we did the, if you remember, we did the...
Changed the addendum.
Addendum. And in the addendum, because of what was happening with potential litigation and other factors concerning the designated redevelopment zone portion of the Lower Broadway Corridor, we didn't address anything at that time. Now that we've been working with a potential developer and moving forward on this and that the zone itself, when it was created back in 1996 and adopted in 2001, a lot of the variables have changed. The zoning that's in place was based upon that area being an arts and entertainment area. And some of the, the only permitted uses that were allowed in there were theaters, workshops. The types of things that were talked about were pottery shops, culinary schools, dance studios, theater workshops, multimedia studios, billiard clubs, believe it or not, and cyber cafes and small pubs and dance clubs. That was really the only permitted uses because everything was supposed to be focused on and complement the theater uses. Since the theater uses have been eliminated basically because of the, the condition of those buildings being unsafe, the desire is to allow for a broader palette of commercial uses that already exist within the design guidelines for other sectors in the redevelopment zone. And it also does two things. It allows for the potential applicant who is going to be putting in commercial to have a better success rate for the type of commercial that would come in there and give him more opportunities to get commercial that would be geared towards the residential uses that are going to be going in above the commercial in the ground floor.
You also have the move of the New Jersey Repertory Theater from Broadway location down into West End.
He's staying in both.
They're staying in both.
But remember in the original plan, there was going to be a move into the redevelopment area across the street. That's now not going to happen. So one of the proposed potential tenants is going to be gone and the building's gone.
Is that it, Carl?
That's it.
Any other questions?
So these are the, the additional uses that's listed, just for...
Yes, and those uses, if you look at where they are, as it says, you look in design guideline number seven and you look at page number seven, and this lists all the uses. And if you want, I could go down these real quickly. I mean, I don't want to spend the whole time and read every single thing, but it basically allows for more general retail. It allows for, and things more like camera shops, gift shops, computer shops, electronics, florists, office supplies. It allows for apparel shops, stores, athletic apparel, children's apparel. These are just examples. This doesn't mean these are the only ones, but it's, it's the, it's the idea. It allows for cyber businesses, allows for more service retail, that would be like a beauty shop, coffee shops, laundry mats if necessary, shoe repair, specialty stores that would also be arts and handicraft, beauty products, specialty supplies, professional services and offices, banking facilities, professional legal services, more restaurant and bars. And those are basically what we're, we're saying is we want to allow the applicant to have a broader target to, to be able to draw from to get businesses there.
Still first floor.
Only first floor. And the first floor, other than... And the first floor, other than where entrance ways are off of Broadway, all of what is being proposed is still stays all commercial. There's no residential on Broadway.
The idea is to give the proposed developer or developers the greatest opportunity of success by giving them the greatest magnitude of uses that are available so that their array is greater rather than narrow.
Carl, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is there any allowance for a liquor store in that area?
Liquor store.
I'm looking down at the list right now.
Well, any license premise with a broad C would be able to have that, right? Part of the license?
A broad C has to go both ways.
And the establishment that had the broad C license could potentially do that.
Dr. Selly, a standalone liquor store is not a permitted use.
Okay, I just answered your answer. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
What did you need for that?
Different liquor licenses, broad C. Broad C has a package store license, so you can have a package store within your premises.
Oh, if you had a restaurant.
If you had a restaurant.
Restaurant.
Or a license premise that has a broad C license, you could also have a package store as part of your program.
Anything else? So Carl, you're looking at this point, I mean, the changes obviously are minimal.
Correct.
You are looking to get a consensus tonight or does everyone want to do that? Do you want, is there an urgency here to this?
Well, we want consensus so we can draft up the ordinance, introduce it.
Okay, so my question is, you want to wait and see if there's any questions and introduce on the second meeting in September or do you want to go ahead?
I'm ready to do it.
I'm ready to go ahead.
Introduce for the?
I would be fine.
Sorry?
I'd be fine with it.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll draft them up and have them on the table.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi, hi, Tor.
Thank you.
Okay, and finally, review the regularity agenda. Kate?
No.
Michael?
No.
George? Mary Jane?
No.
If not, I need a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, they.
I need a motion to go into executive session for the following items. Contract negotiations for Pier Village III with Mr. Duckman and litigation for affordable housing in COA with Mr. Duckman as well. Can I have a motion?